Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani.
Here.
Trustee Compass.
Here.
Trustee Reardon. Trustee Radacevsky.
Here.
Mayor Pico.
Here. And Trustee Reardon apologizes, he actually has an injury, had to go to the acute care for, so he couldn't make it tonight. And Clerk Gaspardo, same similar issue in that he was recently appointed and had something on his calendar for Tuesday night. It's the one meeting we do all year that's on a Tuesday night, so he already had something on his calendar, so our deputy clerk is sitting in. So, welcome tonight again, Alex.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the August 19th, 2024 regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees Meeting of August 19th, 2024.
Second.
Any comments? Call or roll.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Radacevsky.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Accounts payable August 20th, 2024.
Non-scheduled citizens.
My bad. Non-scheduled citizens and visitors for agenda-specific public comment.
Is there anyone here to speak for agenda-specific items not including the public hearings, which you'll have an opportunity to speak at the public hearing?
Accounts payable August 20th, 2024 through September 3rd, 2024 approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to approve the accounts payable August 20th, 2024 through September 3rd, 2024 in the amount of $6,443,682.50.
Second.
Call or roll.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
I abstain, I have a business relationship with a vendor.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Radacevsky.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Item A, payroll for August 16th, 2024 approval. Item B, Village Hall Windowline Project Change Order Ratification. Item C, Village Facility Electrical Improvements. Item D, Special Event Permit for Orland Park Veterans Commission and Veterans Voices, Metal Bonner Bus Event, over 100 people per day. Item E, Cisco Umbrella Through Your License. Item F, Approval of the May 6th, 2024 and May 15th, 2024 Executive Session Minutes. Item G, SB Friedman Development Advisors as Needed Consulting Services, Part II. Item H, An Ordinance Annexing Property, Aldi 11200 West 179th Street Ordinance. Item I, Resolution Authorizing Application by the Village for Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program Funds for the 153rd Street and Ravinia Avenue Roundabout. Item J, A Resolution Approving the Local Public Agency Agreement for Federal Participation to be entered into by the Village World Park and the Illinois Department of Transportation IDOT and for the appropriation of village funds for the purpose of paying for the local agency share related to the design of a roundabout intersection of 153rd Street and Ravinia Avenue under IDOT Project Number M3KL805, State Job Number D-91-207-24, Section Number 21-00088-00-CH.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
Move to approve Items A through J of the consent agenda.
Second.
Call or roll.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Radacevsky.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Before we open the public hearings, and we have three of them tonight, as most of you know, the Board of Trustees and the village staff have been working for the past five or six years, actually, on developing a viable plan for the Metro Triangle north of 143rd Street. The Village World Park Joint Review Board, which is made up of representatives from all the taxing districts who will benefit from the Triangle development and is constituted for dual purposes of keeping the tax bodies apprised of our progress and for providing the public an opportunity to comment on the same progress, has held two public hearings with respect to this development and to the TIF, and has approved them with no negative votes. Our Plan Commission has held a public hearing and voted positively on the zoning entitlement aspect of this project. The Village Board has unanimously adopted a special use permit for a planned development in anticipation of the amendment of the Main Street TIF District in formation of the new Downtown Orland Park TIF District. Tonight, the Village Board will be conducting three public hearings to continue our process of approving this new development plan. The Board has previously indicated its full support for this development project. Tonight's additional public hearings will fulfill this Board's commitment to transparency and give our constituents another opportunity, they've had about 14 or 15 of them so far, to comment on this important matter. Upon the completion of tonight's hearing and after consideration of the public's comments, the staff will draft the necessary ordinances to approve the project. The Board will then have an opportunity, our next Village Board meeting, to consider and vote on whether the village will move forward with our partner Edwards Realty on the development of the Metro Triangle. At this time, we will proceed as follows. Before we open any of the public hearings, the staff will present a video and slideshow describing the project and the significance of establishing a tax increment financing and business district overlay to make this exciting project financially feasible. I will then open the public hearing on the amendment of the Main Street TIF District. We will then proceed with the public hearing and take public comment on the Main Street TIF aspect of the project. As has been our practice, there will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker to comment. After all public comment has been taken and all questions answered, I will ask for a motion to adjourn the Main Street TIF public hearing. I will then proceed to open a public hearing on the creation of the Downtown TIF District, following the same procedures, and then a public hearing for the Main Street TIF District. Then we'll do the same thing for the creation of the Business District, following the same procedures. Please pay close attention to the staff's presentation, as it will cover and elucidate the subject matter of each public hearing. I remind everyone that these matters will be considered by the Village Board for final approval at our next meeting, September 16th, 2024, and at our October 7th, 2024 Board meeting, the staff will present the final redevelopment agreement with the Edwards Realty Company for the Board's approval. After that approval, Edwards will be able to seek and secure permits to actually get the redevelopment project underway. If there are no procedural questions, I will ask the staff to do the presentation.
Work is well underway between the Village of Orland Park and Edwards Realty to finalize the details of Downtown Orland Park with the goal of breaking ground sometime this fall. If you recall, in 2004, the Village of Orland Park undertook an ambitious effort to develop an area that meets the village's longstanding vision of creating a pedestrian-friendly downtown environment for Orland Park. Having invested approximately $150 million into the Triangle in public-private partnerships, public investments, private investments, land acquisition, and roadway intersection improvements, the project remains incomplete. Seeking to finally bring home the village's longstanding vision for the area, at the May 2nd, 2022 Village Board Meeting, the Village Board approved the conceptual master development plan for Downtown Orland Park. Downtown Orland Park contains 9.15 acres of undeveloped land in the Main Street Triangle between 143rd Street and LaGrange Road. This area is currently a TIF District. What is a TIF? TIF, or Tax Increment Financing, is an economic development tool used to boost economic growth and create jobs by allowing developers to pursue developments that they normally wouldn't if they had to fund the projects on their own. TIF districts are created for three reasons. Number one, the local government does not have the funds needed to revitalize the property. Number two, developers are hesitant to invest because redevelopment costs would exceed property values. And number three, without action, the surrounding areas are at risk of decay and an eroding tax base. Once the TIF is approved, the annual property tax increases in the district are frozen at their current level. The increment above the frozen level is then used to pay off the financing over time. The development will increase the property value within the TIF District, and once completed, create additional tax revenue for the community. The additional retail sold from the real estate can increase the sales tax revenue from the community as well. For example, the current assessed value of all properties within the proposed Downtown Orland Park TIF District is $0. When the TIF District expires in 23 years, the new assessed value of the property will be approximately $45 million. TIF doesn't pull money from schools or any other taxing body. All other taxing bodies are entitled to the tax revenue they were receiving before the creation of the TIF District, and schools and other taxing bodies will receive the benefit of the tax revenue after the TIF District expires. Without the TIF District, the assessed value of all properties within the proposed Downtown Orland Park TIF District will remain $0. Remember, TIF is not a new tax. Now that that's out of the way, in order to continue development in and around the TIF District at the Main Street Triangle, the village must do two things. One, amend the existing TIF District boundary to include a subset of the parcels currently in the TIF District, and two, designate a new TIF District on some of the parcels currently in the TIF District. Since the May 2nd, 2022 Village Board Meeting, the plans of Downtown Orland Park have evolved to create a truly iconic and enjoyable experience, attracting some of Chicagoland's most desirable cafes, restaurants, and marketplaces. There will be over 140,000 square feet of new building space that will be used for retail, restaurant, entertainment, and other commercial uses, but most importantly, no new residential space will be built. Heroes Park will be the central hub to Downtown Orland Park, designed to accommodate flexible outdoor activities, including farmers' markets, concerts, ice skating, and additional activities. The site will include a tribute to Heroes Water Feature and over 37,000 square feet of landscaping area with plenty of trees for shade and a plethora of lawn room for everyone to enjoy. The North Pond will be another beautiful feature for the development. Residents can overlook the water feature while enjoying the businesses of Downtown Orland Park. This area will have a completed pedestrian connection to LaGrange Road for more access. Downtown Orland Park is seated right along a rail line with a Metro Commuter Rail Stop at 143rd Street. This considers the development a transit-oriented development. Transit-oriented developments, or TOD, create compact mixed-use developments near public transit to ensure people ease of access to jobs and other services. Some examples of other transit-oriented developments include Downers Grove, Park Ridge, LaGrange, and Arlington Heights. Some of the other updated parcels include... The current two options of the site plan for Downtown Orland Park utilize over 1,450 total parking spaces for the development. According to an independent parking study done on July 16th, 2024, this amount of total parking spots will exceed the required amount during peak projected times for parking needs in both site plan options. With the expansion of Heroes Park from the previous Crescent Park parcel, a traffic study needed to be done to determine how traffic would flow throughout the Downtown Orland Park area. According to an independent study done on July 22nd, 2024, with the modifications to Crescent Circle Drive, Jefferson Avenue, an addition of a pickup and drop-off area on the north side of 142nd Street, and new access drives serving Parcels A, B, and C, the intersections that provide access to Downtown Orland Park will accommodate development-generated traffic without impacting internal intersection operations. In addition, the internal intersections within the site are projected to operate efficiently and will not impact the access intersection operations. The site will also continue to provide adequate accommodations for pedestrians. The total development cost of this project, including improvements, is approximately The TIF Increment Fund will fund approximately $33 million of this cost. Of that, about $10 million will be used for utility relocation and the construction of Heroes Park. Additionally, the village will be dividing up its bonds for financial security. As development reaches a set of standards, more money will be released. In order to ensure long-term maintenance of Downtown Orland Park, the village will also establish a special service area for the entire property. Special Service Areas, or SSAs for short, are local tax districts that fund expanded services and programs through a localized property tax levy within that tax district. Revenue generated by the Downtown Orland Park SSA could be used for a number of things, including the following. There are a lot of moving parts as part of this project. Here are some important upcoming dates. These dates are subject to change. Because of the importance of this project for the community, we want to hear from you. Before a TIF District is created, the redevelopment plan must be available for public review at least 45 days prior to the public hearing. The public hearing offers the community an opportunity to raise questions and voice their concerns about the proposed redevelopment. A registry of interested residents and organizations must also be created for each TIF, and a notice of important TIF activities shall be sent to those registered. For more information or to sign up for the TIF Registry, please visit...
No. So now we'll be entering the public hearing for the amended MST TIF project area.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to open the public hearing for the amended MST TIF project area.
Second.
Is there anyone here to speak on this? Jeff, you have a short presentation? Okay. And I'm assuming this is going to cover all of them?
I've got three different ones for three different hearings, if that's...
That's fine, that's fine, we can do that, we can do that.
I appreciate how much time the Board has spent with this matter, and so I'll try to keep it quick. How's that for that?
Okay, perfect.
And the community, I know everybody's well aware, so I'm Jeff Dickinson with SB Friedman Development Advisors, Economic Development Consultant to the Village. Whoever's got the slides, if you could skip through, I'm here with my colleague Samantha Moskell. This is a little history of the TIF area. The mayor laid that out, I think, about there was an original TIF, there was an amendment. The purpose of this amendment, number two, is to make the TIF smaller in order to create the new DOP TIF, in order to provide the timeline required to generate the revenue to make the project feasible. Next slide, please. This is just a map showing the shrinking of the TIF area, so the blue and the gray was the original TIF. The gray is the, what we're calling the remainder of the MST TIF, so it's shrinking down, what's left is 9750, the UFC Building and the parking deck excluding the retail space. Next one, please. This is a change to the future land use plan, it provides for a mix of uses. Again, I don't know that there's a lot of development anticipated in the remainder TIF, but we wanted to make a flexible plan in case something came forward. The budget has been adjusted, primarily to deal with inflation since the TIF was created, but again, I don't think there's a lot of plans for this TIF in particular, it's more about getting out of the way so that the DOP TIF can be put in place. And this is the public hearing, and then, as the mayor said, the consideration should come soon.
Okay. And check again, is there anyone from the public to speak? Okay, does the Board have any questions or comments? Trustee Katsinas.
Just had some questions, I was hoping George, I hope he feels better, was here, but Jim, maybe you can answer it. I recently saw some attacks on the TIF from a District 230 board member and a paid spokesperson for the Orland Fire District. This confused me because it was my understanding that these taxing bodies were invited to these meetings that approved these TIFs, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So they were invited, and did they, District 230 show up in the Fire District?
District 230 did show up, we did not have a representative from the Fire District.
Okay. So it's my understanding their respective boards motioned and voted on it, is that correct?
District 230 and District 135 did.
Okay.
Requested the motions.
Okay.
And there were no negative votes.
Okay, so the Fire...
So District 230 and 135 both, they were there, they both motioned it and seconded it, I don't know which one did which, and then they abstained. The two representatives abstained, and they told me afterwards it was because they hadn't been able to bring it in front of their Board yet.
Okay. And did any elected officials attend TIF meetings that we've had?
From which body?
Any elected officials, from either District 230?
Oh, no, I'm not aware of any participation by elected officials.
Okay. So I think of the last three TIF meetings, I've been the only elected official at any of those meetings that I'm, that I can remember. I don't know if even any of them, there's ever been a representative from any of the Boards.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that the library president was there?
The library president, I don't think she was here for this one.
For this one, and in the past, she has been here.
No, it wasn't, it definitely was not the library president, it's the executive director.
I'm sorry.
So yeah, so no, the library, I don't think any, for at least the last three and maybe any of the TIF meetings I've ever been in, I don't think there's ever been another elected official besides me at those meetings.
That's my understanding.
Okay, well, according to my calculations, we had something like 12, 13, possibly even more, meetings on this, and no elected official from District 230 ever at those meetings?
Correct, as far as I know, that's correct.
Okay. Or for that matter, were there any other representatives other than the library and District 135?
Well, no, there's never been an elected official at any of the 15 meetings that I'm aware of.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
Any other comments from the Board? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing on the Main Street Triangle.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to approve adjournment of the public hearing of the Main Street Triangle Amendment Number Two, TIF public hearing.
Second.
Call or roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Radacevsky.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
The proposed Downtown Orland Park TIF project area.
So we'll now be entering into a public hearing for the proposed, the new proposed TIF project area.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to open the public hearing for the proposed Downtown Orland Park TIF project area.
Second. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If someone could go to that slide, so this is the inverse of the map we were talking about before with the addition of a little bit of land on the west side of Southwest Highway, that's the boundary. Next slide, please. This is essentially the work we did to research this, to make sure that the land qualified under the statute. Next one, please. This is the way vacant land qualifies under the statute or can qualify, there's a one-factor test and a two-factor test. Next one, please. We've got both, we had a two-factor test satisfied and a one-factor test satisfied. Next one, please. Obsolete plating was one of the two-factor tests, three-quarters of the parcels are plated in an obsolete way, the development plans for the Triangle are going to change some of those parcel shapes to make them buildable. Next one, please. Lack of growth in property values, again, the area meets that test, it's not keeping up in three or five period-year periods. Next one, please. 100% of the runoff contributes to flooding in the McGinnis Slough, per a study by Spaceco, so that's the one-factor test. So we have eligibility one of two ways, thank you, that's great. There are other required findings and tests, they were all met. Next one, please. And then the second half is the plan, so you have to make sure the area can qualify. Then you lay out a plan for the tool to support development, these goals are consistent with the goals, the plans the Board has approved, funding infrastructure, funding building rehabilitation, and other things like that. Next one, please. This is the budget for the new TIF, $70 million, this is not a requirement that you spend it, this is a limit, and, but you have to have a limit because the law says you have to have a limit. Next one, please. Future land use, it's very flexible, again, the Board has made land use policy already, the tool is coming to support that policy and to be flexible enough to respond to the developer's needs and the market's needs. Next one, please. That's it.
Great, and we need to call a roll, hoping you've already spoken, but we haven't had public comment yet, so call a roll on the motion.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Radacevsky. Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Is there anyone here to speak on the new TIF? Any comments from the Board? So I'll only comment just generally on the TIFs as a whole. You know, a TIF is a great tool, I've spent a lot of time with other mayors fighting the state legislature that's tried to get rid of TIFs and the economic development tools. The beauty of it is, it's an economic development tool, it actually uses its own funds to fund it, and in a lot of cases, and basically, as Jeff just kind of, you know, alluded to, there's tests it has to meet, and one of those is that without the TIF, it's not going to be developed the way that, you know, it should be. And the reality is, that's where we're at with this TIF. You know, we've seen some, you know, go back to the previous TIF. A TIF can be done well, it can be done poorly. Go back to the previous one, I would contend that it was done very poorly, a lot of mistakes made, a lot of big mistakes made that are just, just in general, TIFs are not going to do well when that happens. You know, you don't own the land to begin with, so you use the TIF money to buy the land, you don't have control of it, you don't even have a deal for it. You don't have a project in place or in mind, you just have some broad vision, but you don't actually have a project. You use the TIF funds to, you know, basically to, in this case, to reward your friends that had businesses, drive other businesses out, we used eminent domain as well for it. Then we put a bunch of infrastructure in with no plan, well, now the developer's kind of stuck with whatever infrastructure you've put in there. We put infrastructure right through the middle of some land, that wasn't so good either. We, and then you put a, your biggest piece of development down there is actually a non-for-profit, which generates no property tax, so it, no increment, which does not help the TIF. So, just a lot of, just fundamental mistakes that, and it all stems from the fact that we got into the land development business. TIFs should be used to help, you know, area develop, help developers and partner with us to do that, like we're doing here. And, you know, we've heard a lot of complaints about this particular, not a lot, a few complaints about this particular project, just to be clear, without a TIF, we could do this without a TIF. You'd have about five or six buildings looking just like 9750 and be nothing but apartments. We've had that proposal brought to us, that's, they were asking for no money, that's the only way that this could get done. There's no one on this Board that would approve it, I don't think there's anyone on the previous Board that would have approved something like that, it's not fit, does not fit with what the village is looking for. And this particular development has no, no more residential down there. That was something that the Board was trying to limit residential as much as possible, and preferably none, and there's none. So this is a good project, it's a market-driven project, which in the past, they were kind of pie in the sky, oh, we hope this stuff comes, this is actually driven by the market. Been down this road for six or seven years, so it's not something new, and it's been about 15 public meetings or so that we've had on this to get public input, so, you know, so we've taken a lot of those, and quite frankly, the last six or seven, there hasn't been anybody even at, so we take that to mean people are generally pretty happy with it, so. So this will be a great project, looking forward to getting it approved over the next month. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to approve adjournment of the public hearing for the Downtown Orland Park TIF redevelopment project area.
Second.
Call or roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Radacevsky.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Public hearing for the proposed Business District.
And I'll entertain a motion to enter into the public hearing for the proposed Business District.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Compass.
I move to open the public hearing for the proposed Business District.
Second.
Call or roll.
Trustee Compass.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Radacevsky.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Jeff, you got something else on this one? All right.
Next couple of slides, please. The boundary, real quickly, has the parcels to the west of Southwest Highway, a couple on the south side of 143rd, and it's the whole Triangle. Business District is an additional sales and hotel tax, so it's different from TIF in that regard, but that's the boundary that this applies to. Next one, please. This outlines some of the key facts of the statute, you've only got to find one factor, You've only got to find one factor, so the rules are similar to TIF but different. Similar required findings and tests, such as the BUT4 test that the mayor mentioned. Next one, please. Business District taxes are not levied on everything. The state law has exemptions for groceries, for prescription medicine, medical appliances, things like that. But given the anticipated tendency here of restaurants and entertainment and things like that, those are, those are going to be subject to the Business District sales tax. Next one, please. This is the process. We'll skip that one. I think we're all doing it right now. Thank you. Eligibility, you've got to find at least one factor. That's the list. And it has to have adverse consequences. Next one, please. We found deterioration of site improvements. Again, if you know the triangle, you know there is deterioration on the site improvements. And we found that the parcels are absolutely platted. It's similar to the facts for TIF but different. And then we found that the, these conditions lead to economic viability and economic underutilization. Again, zero tax base, zero buildings for most of it. That's pretty self-evident, but we wrote it up. This is the analysis and research that we did. Again, it's consistent, the plan is consistent with your master plan. That's the land use policy the board has approved for the triangle. This is a tool, another tool, to help make that a reality. It was just a description of the deteriorated site improvements finding. Next one, please. Obsolete plating. Not all the parcels are platted in an obsolete way, but some of them are, and enough of them, we felt it was meaningfully present and reasonably distributed. Again, I've sort of alluded to it already, lack of development, lack of tax base, lack of investment, aside from assistance development that has occurred with village financial assistance. 9750s, we know, there was a significant village participation in that, and basically the whole triangle. So there has been no market investment in the triangle. That's been heavily assisted by the village. And we think that will continue, and you're going to have to keep helping. If you want the outcome that you want, which is mayor described. These are the BUT4 tests. Again, we know that the project, as desired by the board, would not go forward without the tools in place. So parcels are contiguous. And again, we're not making land use policy. We're supporting the policy that's in place. The plan is similar to a TIF plan. Again, broad, general, grow the tax base, and fund infrastructure, improve facades and signage, and support your other land use policy. That's what the tool is here to do. There's a budget. It's a smaller budget. That's based on projections of sales and the sales and hotel, potential hotel taxes that could come off of it. Again, that's a cap. So if by some means they're 11 or 12 million, well, there's a lot, you're allowed to make adjustments for inflation. But this is an effective cap on spending from Business District. And the money has to be spent in the triangle, or in the, in the study area, I should say. That's it.
Any comments? So for the public, this is a tax inside that district only. And so again, it's a tool to use to allow to develop that area. And it can only be spent, the money raised can only be spent on that, so it's all for the capital improvements of that area. So we're hopeful that that will enhance the area, make it even nicer and more attractive for everyone. And again, the beauty of all of this is it's done not with the village's budget. So if you think of the previous TIF where we're 30 million in the hole and plus others, it wasn't even on the TIF books that we spent a lot of money on, taking money away from other projects. In this case, it's all staying contained inside the TIF. It's not coming from other sources in the village budget, so that's what's critical here. Call the roll. Oh, sorry, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, is there any public comments on this, on the Business Tax District? Sorry. No? Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Trusty Compass.
I move to approve adjournment of the public hearing for the DOP TIF redevelopment project area.
Second.
Sorry, this should be for the, uh...
Yeah, the language is wrong. Sorry, I move to approve adjournment of the public hearing for the proposed Business District.
Second.
Call a roll.
Trusty Compass?
Aye.
Trusty Katsinas?
Aye.
Trusty Healy?
Aye.
Trusty Milani?
Aye.
Trusty Raszewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Plan Commission Bylaws Resolution?
Mr. Mayor?
Trusty Katsinas.
I move to adopt a resolution entitled "A Resolution Approving Plan Commission Policies and Updated Bylaws."
Second.
And this is for, so the public and the board knows, this is for the Planning Commission. They just want to update their bylaws. Some of these things I think are needed, and the Planning Commission wanted to do it. One is electronic participation, so that, you know, if a board, if a Plan Commission member is away from work or, you know, rehabbing or something like, like Trusty Raszewski is today, they can participate electronically, which makes a lot of sense. Public participation policy also makes sense because they spend a long time on some of these meetings, and some of them are, you know, frankly, small potatoes issues, that they spend a couple hours listening to people and hearing the same thing over and over and over again. And while they encourage, and they encourage public participation, it allows them to limit it to three minutes, your comments, just like we do here. So come there, have your, have your comments and be ready. Or to 10 minutes if you're representing a group of four or more. And the total on any particular subject matter, 30 minutes. Of course, the board president can extend that, and I suppose he would for big-ticket issues, but probably not for a shed or something like that. And then it also has information on tenants' policies, and it also clarifies the fact that in the absence of the chair, that the vice chair runs the meeting, which is what they've been doing in practice anyways, but I don't think it was ever codified. So that's essentially what this does. Are there any comments or questions? Call a roll.
Trusty Katsinas?
Aye.
Trusty Healy?
Aye.
Trusty Milani?
Aye.
Trusty Compass?
Aye.
Trusty Raszewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
RFP Number 24-D... Back Southfield 6 through 9.
Mr. Mayor?
Trusty Healy.
I move to approve awarding RFP Number 24-056 to Midwest Netting Solutions for the removal and replacement of the existing backstops on Centennial Park Fields 6 to 9 for an amount not to exceed $242,406, plus a contingency of $12,120.30 for a total not to exceed of $254,526.30. And authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review. And authorize the village manager to approve change orders not to exceed the contingency amount.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions? So it's a good, it's good projects that, you know, we need to maintain our fields in good condition, and that's what this does. It's a little bitter. So, and the bids were actually pretty close, too. So, call a roll.
Trusty Healy?
Aye.
Trusty Compass?
Aye.
Trusty Katsinas?
Aye.
Trusty Milani?
Aye.
Trusty Radashewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye. Aye.
Schusler Park V3 Construction Group Change Order and Contract Amendment.
Mr. Chairman.
Trusty Compass.
I move to approve Contract Amendment C with V3 Construction Group in the amount of $648,653, along with a contingency of $32,432.65 for a total not to exceed amount $681,085.65 for the construction and installation of the Schusler Park restroom storage facility. And authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review. And authorize the village manager to approve change orders not to exceed the contingency amount.
Second.
And just briefly, this is for the bathrooms and storage over at Schusler Park, which were going to be part of Phase Two. We did them in Phase One because we had additional contingency money left over, but it ran a little bit over into next year's budgeted amount because it was a little bit over. We approved a certain, we approved an amount, but this is, the bids came back a little bit higher. Still needs to be done. So, so the plan is to get it, get it done now. Are there any questions or comments on it?
Mr. Mayor?
Trusty Healy.
In the details about the subcontractors, a line 2.14 of the proposal, or whatever it has to do with subcontract insurance and administration at 8%. I'm not sure what the subcontract insurance, whether that's bonding insurance, do we actually need that? If these are all approved union contractors? And the administration, I just wonder if that, if, you know, if we could, if that, you know, is it, is it... Well, I'd like to get more details on the subcontract insurance and whether that 8% can be reduced.
Certainly check into whether that can be reduced and get a better answer on what that, what is included in that.
Pardon me?
I can dig into it and find out what exactly is included in that and see if that price can go down.
Yeah, I mean, I just wonder what, you know, it just left me wondering.
I mean, generally, all subcontractors and contractors have to provide insurance based on the village's requirements, so I think this just covers all of that required insurance.
Right. And then they have their own insurance. We ask them for their certificate of insurance for...
Plus additional endorsements.
And then this, this, all I can think of is it might be bonding insurance, and I'm not sure if we need to spend that money.
It is typical of any project that we have this kind of line item with insurance in it. It's not unusual to include it. I don't know, Joel, if in your experience, if the 8% is typical, but I think it's, it's pretty typical.
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly check into it. So we can still approve it tonight, and they can still look into it and see if it can be reduced. But it's pretty standard, unfortunately, in our, in all of our contracts. Any other questions or comments? Call a roll.
Trusty Compass?
Aye.
Trusty Milani?
Aye.
Trusty Healy?
Aye.
Trusty Katsinas?
Aye.
Trusty Radashewski?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Second Amendment to the Commuter Facility Construction, Operation, and Maintenance Agreement, Metro Orland Park 143rd Street Commuter Facility.
Mr. Mayor?
Trusty Katsinas.
I move to approve the Second Amendment to the Commuter Facility Construction, Operation, and Maintenance Agreement, Metro Orland Park 143rd Street Commuter Facility, and authorize the village manager to execute said agreements and all related contracts subject to attorney, village attorney review.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Nothing? So these are, you know, basically, about the 143rd, we've agreed to add more parking. And then the lines basically haven't gotten back to the normal level of ridership. So this also amends and just clarifies the fact that we're allowed to use it after hours, which will help for the 143rd Street, so it amends all of that as well. So that's what these are for. And there's, I think there's three of them. So they're all to basically say we can, the big thing is that we can use them because for some reason, we didn't have this agreement at 153rd Street, which we can use them because we maintain them. But we weren't, it wasn't actually formally written, and obviously, we use it for Centennial Park West, so it's pretty important. So that's why we went sure we got all these things done. Any comments? Call a roll.
Trusty Katsinas?
Aye.
Trusty Healy?
Aye.
Trusty Milani?
Aye.
Trusty Compass?
Aye.
Trusty Raszewski? Mayor Pico?
Aye.
First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement for Land Acquisition and the First Amendment to the Agreement for the Operation and Maintenance of Commuter Parking Facility, Metro Orland Park 153rd Street Commuter Facility.
Mr. Chairman.
Trusty Milani.
Move to approve the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement for Land Acquisition, Metro Orland Park 153rd Street Commuter Facility, and approve the First Amendment to the Agreement for the Operation and Maintenance of a Commuter Parking Facility, Metro Orland Park 153rd Street Commuter Facility, and authorize the village manager to execute said agreements and all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any comments? Call a roll.
Trusty Milani?
Aye.
Trusty Compass?
Aye.
Trusty Healy?
Aye.
Trusty Katsinas?
Aye.
Trusty Radashewski? Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Amendment Number Three to the Parking Lot Management Agreement between the Commuter Rail Division of the Regional Transportation Authority and the Village of Orland Park, Metro Orland Park 179th Street Commuter Facility.
Mr. Mayor?
Trusty Healy.
I move to approve Amendment Number Three to the Parking Lot Management Agreement between the Commuter Rail Division of Regional Transportation Authority and the Village of Orland Park, Metro Orland Park 179th Street Commuter Facility, and authorize the village manager to execute said agreement and all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Any comments? Call a roll.
Trusty Healy?
Aye.
Trusty Katsinas?
Aye.
Trusty Milani?
Aye.
Trusty Compass?
Aye.
Trusty Raszewski? Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Non-scheduled citizens and visitors for public comment on items relevant to village business.
Is there anybody here to speak that hasn't signed in? There's nobody signed in. Okay.
Board comments.
Board comments. Trusty Radashewski. Thanks, Joni, and just a couple notes of clarification. We didn't have a boil order. Also, the Code Red, I encourage you to sign up, like Trusty Radashewski said. However, you should sign up, you should be watching social media, that type of thing, or have alerts or whatever for that because Code Red can take two hours to get to the whole town. So if we need to get immediate information to you, Code Red is not the way to get it. It's going to take a while for that to go through all the phone calls, depending on how busy the phone lines and all that are. So, you know, so sign up for all the different ways to get messaging from the village because it, that, you have a better chance of getting it that way than just if you sign up for Code Red. Although Code Red's a good thing to sign up for because we can identify it to specific blocks and specific areas if there's an issue in that area. If it's a village-wide event like we had with the water pressure issue, it's obviously, it obviously could take way too long, so we don't go about it that way. And then the police report is out, as she pointed out, 2023. It's got 2023 data in it. So it's all up to speed and fully, fully vetted by the FBI. It takes us this long to get it all back and forth from the FBI and get everything finalized. So it usually comes out late summer. Trusty Healy.
My board comments, well, I, we just came up, I hope everybody had a nice Labor Day. I always consider Labor Day one of the best socialist holidays of the year. And being an anti-socialist, it's probably anti-social, too. I work seven hours on Labor Day, just to say that, you know, I'm, I'm not part of that, that group. Labor Day represents a celebration of all the good the unions have brought to our country and state. And you can thank the unions for putting Kim Fox in office and other anti-police government officials. You can thank the unions for making the Safety Act possible by elect, having, providing the funds to have those people elected. You can thank the union for promoting the people who make the laws, that make the, that make all the open borders and all these crimes coming, coming into our state. You can thank the unions for providing the money for, uh, providing for... Well, you can take the money for, them to, providing the money to elect all these people with their liberal socialist ideas. You should all look into how much money the unions actually provide. It's astounding. And you can thank them for, you know, these proud union members, you sometimes receive the sign. I'm not so sure what they're proud about with all this. We may see a number of, I don't know, I, I think I'd rather just be, you know, go on my own way and not require a paid holiday. I'd rather earn some, what I get...
I'd rather earn some, what I get, yeah, earn what I get and have the self-respect of making my own way in the country. So anyway, that's my union comments for tonight. So have a happy Labor Day weekend.
Thanks for your comments. Uh, Trusty Katsinas.
Thank you. Uh, just wanted to remind everyone about the great pumpkin party that our rec department is putting on. Uh, it will be held October 15th, two different sessions, one from 10 to 2, I'm sorry, 10 to 12, and one to 3. Uh, you can sign up at orlandpark.org/events. Also, we have parade applications available for the Christmas tree lighting. Can you believe we're in September? But Christmas will be here before we know it. So anybody interested, any business organizations for our parade, um, the applications are open. And again, at our website, orlandpark.org/events. Thank you.
Trusty Malani.
One thing left on my list I can mention. Uh, thank you to everybody that came to the Veterans Golf Classic on Tuesday, August 28th. I was unfortunately not able to be there. I was downtown. Uh, I heard it was pretty hot out there, but we had 121 out of 124 golfers participating. So that just, uh, say thank you to all of those people that came out, made the event possible, and all of our staff that, uh, helped out as well. I mean, it's a big undertaking and, uh, you know, went off without a hitch, so appreciate all the work that you guys do out there. Um, and also just want to, you know, say thank you to our fire, our fire, we don't have a fire department, our police department and our public works department in, uh, not last, uh, last weekend where, when we did have our water issue, how quick everybody was to respond. Um, I had received a phone call from my father-in-law. He was like, is your water pressure low? And I'm like, well, yes, it is. Let me call somebody. And by the time I had already called somebody, people were already taking action. So, uh, you know, our protocols that we have in place took effect and, uh, you know, appreciate everybody's hard work in getting that taken care of quickly and safely. So thank you all.
Trusty Compass.
So good evening. I, I think it's everyone here in Orland Park knows, we experienced a significant hailstorm in mid-May that caused widespread damage throughout Orland Park, particularly to cars and roofs all throughout. Following that event, uh, I know I saw online reports about roofing contractors soliciting businesses within hours of the storm's completion. Uh, some of these contractors, possibly many of them, were not in compliance with our regulations requiring a solicitor's badge, uh, which verifies that the village has conducted a background check when going door-to-door. This is crucial, especially with the rise in ruse burglaries where criminals pose as door-to-door salespeople, often targeting our senior residents. Uh, I'd just like to take this time to, as a reminder, to ask all residents to ask, if someone comes to your door knocking, soliciting, asks to see the badge from the village, if they don't have it, please ask them to leave and then, uh, call, call the police accordingly. In response to the storm, there was a surge in permit applications across the village, totaling over 7,700 applications. Of those, roughly 30% were denied due to the contractor's failure to submit the necessary permits and associated documentation as required by Illinois state law. It's important to note that these requirements are mandated by the state, not Orland Park, and we are obligated to enforce them to protect both the homeowners and businesses within our community. Unfortunately, some contractors have unfairly blamed the village for delays in following state law due, and the enormous volume that we received, especially when their failures also contributed, uh, in, in a sense of the denial of the number of applications. This has added strain to our staff who have been working diligently to review and approve applications. Many of the denied applications take additional time, delaying the process further for those contractors who comply with the law. The volume of requests over the summer surpassed our surge capacity. Even during COVID, staff did not see this many requests. Having to review and ultimately deny a request is also painful for staff who want nothing more than for the Orland Park resident to receive the repairs that they need to their roof. Unfortunately, some vendors have taken to scapegoating the village for delays despite the more vocal ones often being part of the group of 30% denials for failure to follow the instructions. It's also unfair to the vendors who have had much higher acceptance rates as the denied applications take up their time as well before the reviews are done. Some folks have asked me what we are doing to improve the situation. We'd already approved and invested in a new system for development services which would streamline more of this process. However, it was not yet scheduled for implementation, and I would note that we approved the system long before the storm event. So this is not a reaction to that same event. I'd also wager that by now, most of the new submissions are resubmissions from previous failures, uh, which would hopefully reflect on a higher acceptance rate and lower future intake. I know that both Mayor Pico and I have been dedicated our time, our own time, after hours and on weekends to process them, but most significantly, development services staff have committed several hours of collective overtime to help reduce these numbers. This past holiday weekend was a big help in catching us up. So with these employees in mind, I'd like to give a special shout out and appreciation to the following staff, which are in alphabetical order. Ahmed Ike, Allison Isguera, Ed Lilo, James Cassidy, Kevin Gonzalez, Kyle Moy, Marcus Levine, Marie Cortez-Fuentes, Marquita Taylor, Paul Stories, Rick Pike Przyk, Sammy Memmy Shchowski, Sandy Leinhardt, Sengita Santhanam, Tiffany Cooper, and Vicky Dean. I apologize if I've mispronounced anyone's name. I'd also like to most significantly thank Tina Bilecki, who's been a leader throughout all of this. I suspect, I suspect that everything that follows now will seem easy by comparison to the challenges that she was presented with this summer. I'm grateful for her demonstrated patience and diligence, including training a mayor and a trustee on how to navigate our soon-to-be-replaced legacy system. So thank you, Tina. Thank you, staff, and thank you, everyone, for getting us through this.
Thank you all for your comments. Uh, so there's, there's a few things I want to comment on, and I have to do a little, uh, little house cleaning as well. Um, so want to point out, uh, that, uh, it, well, uh, no one, less, least of all me, is happy when, uh, union leadership decides to put 300 grand in a campaign against me. Um, I, that does not necessarily reflect on the union members. We have, uh, four, five unions in the village, and we have good relationships with all of them, uh, good, fair contracts for both sides, um, and they do fantastic work. Um, the overwhelming number of our employees do great work, um, and, uh, of course, like any large organization, we have a few that don't, but, uh, most of the others don't want them around anyways, and that's whether they're union or non-union. So we have a lot of really good, uh, good employees, both union and non-union in, in the, in the village. And I also want to point out that our big construction projects, both at Centennial Park West and at Shusha Park, um, it, I mean, it's a prevailing wage project, it's large general contractors in Illinois are union contractors, and those were union subcontractors that did a fantastic job building both of those. Uh, so the union trades did an amazing job, and you see some of those guys working the steel and doing that kind of stuff. So appreciate all the great work that they do and certainly all the great work that our, um, you know, police officers do, who are obviously all part of, part of the union, as well as our fire district as well. Um, so, uh, thank you to all of you. The water pressure issue that we had, um, so I'll kind of reiterate what I said in my, my press release, you know, uh, so I, I got a phone, uh, well, first, my wife said something, and about the same time, uh, Trusty Katsinas called me, then I got a couple of texts. So since the, the first, I think the first one happened about 12:10. By the time I had a couple more and talked to the chief, um, and I, so I called Joel, who was at, at a family, um, lunch, I believe. Um, and, uh, so by, so 31 minutes after that first, um, that first contact, the pumps were, uh, everything was up and running and the pressures were increasing. So 31 minutes we went through our protocols and got that done. Um, nobody wants to see mechanical systems fail, but they do, um, and we have all the protocols in place to make that happen. Um, it didn't take, um, you know, it, those protocols are there for a reason, and it worked. Um, I saw a lot of people, uh, saw, I, I, you know, obviously read social media, saw a lot of commentary, saw commentary horrendously wishing for things to fail so that they could take advantage of it in the, you know, in the names, the name of, uh, Rahm Emanuel, don't let any crisis go to waste. They really wanted to make political hay of it. And I'm like, I'm really much more worried about making sure the water system is working. And, uh, you know, one of the things I pointed out, one of the things I learned while I was in the Air Force, uh, flying, is they, you know, they teach you a lot about emergencies, how to deal with emergencies. And it's, uh, and they hammer into you, aviate, navigate, communicate. The very last thing we worry about doing is communicating. Why is that? Well, because the first thing you want to do is make sure the system's running. You want us spending the time making sure things are running and working and back in order. That's the first thing we did. The second thing you want to do is make sure that, okay, there's no collateral, collateral damage, everything's running, but is there any other failures that are going to happen because, you know, of what happened? So those are the first two things we do. Then the third thing we do is we communicate. Because if we spent all our time communicating first and didn't do the first two things, then we may have had, got to a point where there's a Boyle Order or something like that. So, um, and on top of that, the first communication went out, I think, 20 minutes after, uh, my, the first phone call to me. So 30 minutes, we were back up and running. I think, uh, uh, it was 20 minutes till the first, it was like, I think, 12:31, and then 12:45, there was a second update. By 1 o'clock, it was all clear, everything's working normally. So you're communicated with, within 45 minutes of the whole thing, it was all fixed, it was all running, and everyone was communicated with. So fantastic job by, um, by our public works director, Joel Van Essen, all of his people, Chief Rossi, and all of his people, because obviously, uh, 911 and non-emergency, we're getting a lot of phone calls. Um, thanks to all the staff that came in, you know, Joel, your staff came in to handle some additional phone calls if they, if they came in. Um, you know, Chief, you, you put out the communications, um, and oh, by the way, you didn't need my direction, you didn't need George's direction. In fact, I don't think we heard from George until after we were already done with it and everything was still working, is the first time, because it's a Sunday. You know, it happened at probably the worst possible time. No one's on staff, no one's there, but think about that, worst possible time, no one's on staff, and we got it done because we followed our protocols, right? And it wasn't just the worst possible time because it was a Sunday. It was also for our water system, um, because of maintenance work that's being done, our biggest water tower, by the way, water towers are not just there like one of our trustees say to, to look nice, they're actually there to pressurize our water system. Not any of these trustees, but an older one said that. Um, it, it's there to, it's the gravity feed from them that actually pressurizes our water system. Well, our biggest water tower, which is what, three times bigger than the others? Two to three times bigger than the others? Um, is down for maintenance because it's being painted, it's the last one to be painted. Now, it had been down for a week, so the other water towers can handle it, but obviously, if you start to lose pressure, you lose it a little faster because, because that water tower's down. Um, additionally, our, our water reserves, um, we're working on, um, our underground storage, so that's down as well, uh, part of it, as we connect into the new water system, and we're doing some routine maintenance on it. So all that's down at the same time, so it kind of happened at the worst possible time and on a 95-degree day, it was also very hot. So all those things, and yet still, 31 minutes later, it was all up and running and everything was going because we followed our protocols. So we have those for a reason, everyone followed them. Great job. I want to thank staff, I want to thank everyone involved in that. Fantastic job. Uh, also, I do want to address the permits. Trusty Compass hit it on the head. Thanks to everyone for all their work. Um, and Trusty Compass has been doing a lot as well, and, you know, certainly, um, you know, uh, he's, uh, doing that on his own time because he cares about the village is why he's jumping in and doing that. So if you look today, and I looked this morning, um, we've had 4,523 permits approved since May 7th, 2,181 denied, and 1,018 open as of the beginning of today. Okay? That's down, the open ones were last week were 1,367, so we've actually made progress and we're reducing that number open. We've gone from 31 days down to, I think we're 21 days now as far as the wait, or 20 days now is the wait time. So we've, we've reduced that. And, uh, if you look at this, 2,181 denied, okay? 1,018 open. Do the math on that. If people were submitting the right permits to begin with, we didn't have denials, we wouldn't have any backlog because we wouldn't have, it takes us just about as long to deny something as it does to approve it, because we have to go through it all. Okay? And I'm here to tell you to, to the homeowners out there, it's not hard. What's asked for is not hard. You're asked to fill out a roof permit, and you have to put your name on it and sign it. I had to deny, I denied someone who didn't print their name. I couldn't even re, if I could have read their signature and could have read their name on their signature, I probably would have approved it. But I couldn't, it was just a scribble. So I don't know who's actually submitted the permit. By law, by Illinois state law, and probably because they've had problems with roofing contractors and consumers, um, they need to submit a driver's license, or not a driver, an ID, a government-issued ID with, with their permit application. It has to go in with every single one, and they have to have a signed contract with their, with the homeowner. So signed contract, which you should have anyways, driver's license, permit. If you're doing a skylight, there's an additional form that needs to be filled out. You just need to sign it, you need to acknowledge that you've received it for the requirements for Scott. That is it. I can tell you that every denial that I've had is because they didn't do one of those things. It's really not that hard. And, um, to Trusty Compass's point, I actually had someone come up to me and ask me about their daughter's permit. And the board still has the same policy, we're not, no favoritism, it's in order of receipt, because we're not going to reward people who haven't done it right by moving them back up to the front. But I, I nicely checked, it took me 15 minutes to check the whole history of it, but it was submitted on June 3rd, it was denied on like July 2nd, just before the holiday. It was resubmitted right after the holiday, like July 6th. It was approved on August 3rd. He's asking me about it on August 11th or 12th, and it was approved a week ago, and he said, well, the contractor said he doesn't have it yet. He's telling the homeowner that he has a, that he has a contract with, that the village is not giving him the permit, that's why he can't start the job, and he's had it for almost 10 days, paid for and in his hand. Okay? There's a lot, so I told you that we've had 4,523 permits approved, we've done 450 inspections of those approvals. Now, maybe there's a little bit of a backlog of inspections, I can promise you it's not 4,000. So I'm not blaming roofers for not getting to, it's a lot of roofs, there's just not enough people, it's going to take a while. If they don't have a leak, it might take till next year. I know my son's town got hit with a tornado, lost a lot of roof damage, it took him a year till he got his roof. Okay? But at the end of the day, it's, the, the village and village staff's an easy foil for the contractors so they can blame you easily, blame us easily. The reality is, they're not getting to the roofs either. So, uh, just keep that in mind, and they may not be giving you all the right information. And all the calls and emails you call yelling at the, at my staff, uh, or my assistant, the village manager's assistant, and another assistant that we have helping so that our development services staff can focus solely on doing the permits and not have to handle these calls, they spend all day dealing with people yelling at them because their, their permit's not ready yet. And every time, it's because the permit wasn't submitted correctly. So, um, keep that in mind and just be patient, because, oh, by the way, they're not going to get to your roof anyways at this juncture, they're way behind, I can promise you. I don't think, there's one that's got 127 roof permits approved, um, I don't think he has enough crews to do 127 in a few months, you know, so, uh, ju, so just keep that in mind, I guess, just, just to say that, you know, don't take it on staff. No one expected a, a hailstorm. Um, you know, you can't staff for 5,000 permits when you normally get a 200, you can't prepare for that. Um, and, uh, we've rolled a lot of staff over to help, and we're doing a really good job of catching up, and we're down to about, you know, like I said, about 20 days, so we're doing a pretty good job on that. So, um, and again, had they been submitted right the first time, we'd probably be caught up. So, because a lot of these two, three times, um, uh, that they've been denied. So, um, so just be patient. Um, I want to thank, um, it's his last week, and I know he's not here tonight, but I want to thank Brian West, um, for his years of service, um, for, uh, for, for Orland Park. So Brian's our deputy chief, um, he's lived here all his life, um, he went to High Point, he went to Orland Junior High, he went to Carl Sandberg, graduated in 89. Sorry, Brian, I outed your age. Um, uh, he, he met his, he met his wife at, at Sandberg, um, and she, her family is, you know, has a long history in Orland Park. Um, he joined Orland Park Police Department as a community service officer, um, and he also worked with the Orland Park Fire Protection District as a firefighter slash paramedic. And then in 1994, he became a full-time officer and was assigned, uh, he, he attended the Chicago Metro Police Academy, and he was a patrol officer and field training officer until 2007, and then he was promoted to sergeant. He was promoted to lieutenant in 2010, patrol division commander in 2017, and to deputy chief in 2022. He's going to be retiring at the end of the week after serving 30 full-time years in the Orland Park Police Department. Um, and that doesn't include his community service time. I can tell you, there is no one that I've seen that has more integrity than Brian West. Um, because of some of the things we've had going on the last few years, I've gotten to, uh, to see a lot of things, I've gotten to read a lot of things, and I'm telling you, under very difficult circumstances, he stayed professional and did the right thing for the residents, he did the right thing just in general, um, did what was right, and that's who he was. So, um, past my gratitude for his 30 years of service, and I know he doesn't want me talking about him, but I'm talking about him anyways. So thank you, Brian, if you're watching, um, and you're probably shaking your head, don't do this, but sorry. So thank you very much for the time you spent here. So, um, I also want to thank our police department for some great work that they did. So you probably remember, we had a shooting back in February, um, and, uh, they were out-of-town people. I can tell you that we got charges, they, they arrested the individual in Las Vegas, and they brought him back last, uh, this, just a few days ago, got brought back to Illinois. Um, he goes in front of the judge tomorrow, and I hope, I hope that they hold him. Um, so they got murder charges, and I can tell you, I think the chief would echo these comments, that if it was not for the support of this board and the boards before, the training that we give our officers, I think our chief said to me today, he goes, I don't think any other department in the state would have solved this crime. And we solved it because of all of, it was amazing police work. You know, I'm privy to a lot of the details of that police work, and, uh, it just, uh, fantastic work, um, fantastic follow-up on, on all of these things, and not just our force, but also the task force that helped as well and came in, because that's what happens when there's a homicide, we bring a task force of, you know, people from all throughout the south, super, south and southwest suburban area, and, uh, they came in and did that. And so just fantastic work for, from everyone, so congratulations on doing such a great, such a great job in getting a dangerous criminal off the street. The, uh, the, the last, the, the last couple of things I have, I did go get the pleasure of seeing Reagan, the movie. I, I highly recommend it, I don't care what side of the political alley-oop you're on, and I, you know, I came of age back then, my first election, uh, was actually, uh, voting for, for him, and, uh, you know, we think that today is the only time that we've had divisive or, you know, media that attacks people, whatever. He was attacked constantly, constantly. But I remember him handling it with wit and grace and humor. Um, and, uh, I, I feel like the movie, it captured, it, I was 18 years old when I voted for president for the first time. So, I, you know, he was president when, 14 to 22, so I was a pretty young man. It's been a while. And I can tell you that my memory of, of him as a president and his eternal optimism for America and the American people was captured, and the essence of who he was and who I remember him being as president was captured in this movie. So I highly recommend going to see it. And, uh, you know, it brings me to today, we see a lot of attacks going on, we see it politically, there's been a lot of stuff we see. Here's what I'll tell people. You have the ability today to go to the source, because we know with AI, they can piece together, they can even make up your voice, they can piece together videos, they've been able to do that for a long time and make you say something that you never said by taking, they, they certainly have done it to me, right? Where they've taken things out of, out of order, changed the words, and it completely changes the meaning of everything that you've said, right? By just splicing videos, uh, just for people's knowledge, when you see them cut away from the video and go to some other video behind it and hear you keep talking, that's usually when they've done it, they've spliced it at that point. But you can go back to the source video and hear the words directly, go find it. And you, so that you can understand, did they really say that or did they not? And this day and age, anyone like in, in, for me or someone else who's in the public eye all the time, who's on media all the time, um, or a lot, if they say they're saying something, but they can't actually back it up with any media, they just keep saying that you said it, you probably didn't say it. They probably, you just realized that. Someone says that either the presidential candidate said something, and there's no video anywhere to support it, I think they've been videoed enough that if they said it, they would have it somewhere. So just keep that in mind when you're out there and, and be inquisitive and don't accept everything that's said out there as being truthful, because a lot of it is not. And, and today's day and age, you have the ability to find it. You have the ability to go out and look for it and find out if it's real or not. So take the time, don't, don't be lazy about it, it's important, your vote's important. So make sure you do your own research. That's all I have to say on that. Look for, it's been a great summer, a lot of great events, know we've got a slow event horizon for the next couple of months, which is kind of nice, uh, we do a budget meetings and the like coming up. Um, thank you, everybody, um, and, uh, thank you for just making it a great summer, thanks to all the staff, uh, for all that you've done. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman.
Trusty Compass.
I move to adjourn the board trustees meeting.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trusty Compass.
Aye.
Trusty Katsinas.
Aye.
Trusty Healy.
Aye.
Trusty Malani.
Aye.
Trusty Radziewski.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
We're adjourned.